No, she's talking about the other one. The, you know, because we're doing two, right here. Um. Athletic trainers, so we need to do three of them. Just print them and make three of them. Okay, alright. Oh. Okay, because he may need to say, because he's doing it. He's still learning how to read the rules.
When I read this, I think exactly because these kids, three of them were the first time ever. Never, one of them never has seen anything.
Yeah, of course.
I didn't want to see it.
No, it's perfectly fine.
Hello? Uh huh, okay, and you? Okay.
Good evening. The council meeting is called to order. At this time, we will have the invocation. Let me see. Who's gonna do the invocation? Troy, you're gonna do my invocation. Both of my invocation people are not here. Eli, you wanna do them?
Troy.
No? I'll do the invocation. Oh, go ahead. Thank you. We all can bow our heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you, Lord God, for keeping us throughout the day and giving us strength. And Lord, I pray for the council throughout this meeting, as well as those that are listening to the meeting. Lord, I pray that you would give us all the understanding and the wisdom that we need to do to move forward in this city. Lord, I thank you, Lord, for all that you do, all that you've done for us, and for keeping us safe throughout this day. In Jesus's name, amen. Amen, thank you. At this time, we'll have the pleasure of leaving. Okay. They're doing the flag, they're leaving.
To the flag of the United States of America. We are a united nation, one nation under God, in the name of the Lord, the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit.
Thank you. Clark Jones, could you call the roll, please? Yes, please, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. For audio quality, we will be muting everyone not speaking by default to maintain good audio quality for council members as well as yourselves. If you would like to speak during the privilege, um, during the meeting on specific agenda items, please submit your request, um, to speak in the chat. Directions to do so are located in the chat. We ask that you provide your full name and address, as those are required for all speakers at in-person meetings. If you would like to be called on during the meeting to provide public input, again, please insert your name and address in the chat, and you will be called on during that relevant time. You will be given five minutes to speak during public input. For citizens that wish to speak during the privilege of the floor, please insert the following into the chat during that time, and the council president will call on you, and you will be given three minutes to speak during privilege of the floor. Please be sure to unmute yourself prior to giving your remarks.
Thank you. The roll call, please.
Yes.
Councilmember Wax.
Present.
Councilmember White. She's, I know she's coming online.
She's on.
Oh, okay. Councilmember White.
You're muted, Karen.
Present.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Present.
Councilmember Hammond.
Present.
Vice President Niszkowski.
Present.
Councilmember Davis. Councilmember Davis. Councilmember Lee.
Present.
Councilmember Warner.
Present.
President McBride.
Present.
Right now, we have eight present. Thank you. At this time, we will go right into our special business. Clark Jones, will you please, please give Resolution 2314 a reading?
2314, Public, publicly recognizing, commending, and honoring the Riley High School Wildcats 2022-2023 Boys Swim Team on a successful season as city champions Northern Indiana Conference and second sectional champions and state sixth overall.
Thank you. The sponsors, please. Sharon McBride, 415 East West Side, South Bend, Indiana.
Eli Wax. 1108 East Woodside, South Bend, Indiana.
Scott Ruskowski, 701 West Sample Street, South Bend, Indiana. And some of you may recognize me as the Chief of Police, others may not, but I am.
I may be a little biased today, I got my Riley Wildcats in the house, yes, yes, yes. Give them a hand. A special resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana publicly recognizing, commending, and honoring the Riley High School Wildcats 2022-2023 Boys Swim Team on a successful season as city champions Northern Indiana Conference, second sectional champions, and state sixth overall. Whereas the Common Council proudly recognizes the 2022-2023 Riley High School Boys Swim Team on a successful swim season wherein they won their ninth consecutive citywide swim championship, second consecutive Highland Invite Championship, second consecutive Valparaiso Long Course Championship, and the 2023 sectional championship title for the 30th time in program history. Also, this is the 48th consecutive season sending swim athletes to the state championships. And since 2001, Riley has won 88 events at the sectional championships compared to all other South Bend high schools combined 12 wins. Riley High School's Boys Swim Teams holds the South Bend Community School Corporation record for the most wins ever in any and all sports combined. That's enough to give a hand clap right there. Whereas this season, the Riley Wildcats, under Coach John Vandrige, Assistant Coach Brett Maher, and Dive Coach Matt Solomon, and Team Captains Ashton Maher, Jerick Ruskowski, Cooper Vandrishe, have amassed an amazing dual meet record of 11 and 1, and the Riley seniors finishing their high school careers with a record of 44 and 6. Coach John's to-date Riley coaching record is 254 wins, 45 losses, and one tie.
Whereas, out of the top 24 teams in the state and top 32 individual swimmers in the state, there is no regional or semi-state for high school swimming, Riley as a team had the smallest high school in the top 10 competition in the state of Indiana. Yet, finished number six overall and took nine spots in the top 16 rankings in, in nine out of the 12 events. Riley swimmers Chris Bartmuss, Patrick, Patty Chapman, Joel Christjeff, Ashton Maurer, Ignatius Ike Ruskowski, and Yarik Ruskowski also broke several school, pool, and sectional records this season. Whereas, on behalf of our entire community, the South Bend Common Council is honored to recognize and extend their appreciation for the hard work, support, and dedication of the team, coaches, athletic director, Mr. C.B. Gavin, and high school principal of Riley, the Mr. Shawn Henderson. He's here. The members of the 2022-2023 Riley High School Boys Swim Team are, gentlemen, if you, would you want them to come? Come forward when I say your name. Freshman, Michael Batello. Michael's, come on up. Michael's a first-time swimmer. Landon Eichelberry, or Eckelberry, depends on you ask him or his dad. Everett Maurer. Sophomores Nathaniel Amaya. Michael Anderson. Patty Chapman. Elliot Ream. Anthony Schmack. Dominic Vital Richards. Juniors Chris Bartmuss. Lawrence Carpenter. Joel Christjeff. Tristan Lathian. First-time diver, first-time diver, and one of the most improved divers I've ever seen in all my years, uh, being a witness to this. Ignatius Ike Ruskowski. Seniors Lucas Carpenter. Alvaro Fernandez. Also a first-timer. Jared Flora. Alexander Alex Nappenberger. I'm tempted to do this in my announcer's voice, I don't know why. Hugo Menjivar. Ashton Maurer. Upile Umpunga. Upile, just a quick side note, Upile has never, ever, ever been in the water, not a ocean, not a pool, not a lake, anything. Very first time, did not know how to swim, and that young man right there, as a visitor to our country, took not only a leap of faith there, but into that water, and I'd like another hand for that young man right there. And our last two seniors, Yarik Ruskowski. And Cooper Vandrishe.
Now therefore, be it resolved by the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana as follows. One, the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana publicly honors and congratulates the 2022-2023 Riley High School Boys Swim Team for winning the many listed titles and events, and for reclaiming the sectional title. Two, the council also wishes to extend a special thank you and its appreciation not only for the Riley High School administration and staff, but to all the parents, family, and friends who support and encourage these amazing athletes, especially from 3:00 a.m. until 7:00 p.m., six days a week, most of the year. And three, this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its adoption by the council and approval by the mayor, agreed this 27th day of March, 2023.
At this time, I would like to call Coach Vandrige and also Principal Shawn Henderson to the podium, please.
I know you're not a man with words, Coach.
I don't expect you to speak.
You don't have to, that's why we got your backup.
We just want to say thank you all so much for allowing us to be here this evening. This is just an amazing group of young men that have truly put in the work. As you heard, just even from the work of their parents, just dropping them off at 5:00 a.m. and then coming back to have a second practice. Coach is a guy of few words, but he's a person that has instilled standard, tradition, loyalty, and respect out of these young men. I just think about today. I must have had a look on my face, and one of them said, "Mr. Henderson, are you okay?" Even took time to walk across the cafeteria to check in on me. And those are some of the things that these young men have truly done. I think about another young man that drove my daughter to Midwinter and, uh, made sure that everything was taken okay, opened the door for her, and wouldn't even allow her, allow for her to pay for her own meal. And so those are things that these young men continue to do. I am so honored and so proud to serve as their principal. Coach Vandrishe has been just amazing, Chief Ruskowski has been amazing, and again, I just thank you all so much for recognizing these young men. Shawn Henderson, 1902 Fellow Street, South Bend, Indiana, 46613.
You're such an educator.
John Vandrishe, 205 Renwood Trail, North Liberty, so I'm not, I can't actually vote for you guys, so. So I, I can't, I can't thank these young men enough, especially the ones that have been in the program for a very long time. A lot of these boys have been swimming with me since they were seven years old, and so our bonds are much deeper than just coach-athlete relationship, and what the sacrifices they make never are, never go unseen or unnoticed, and I just want to say publicly, thank you to all of them for what they've done, and to all the parents for all the sacrifices I'm sure that you've made over the years. We would not be a program if it wasn't for all of us involved together. That means the athletes, the parents, and our administration, so I'd like to thank the Common Council for taking this time to recognize us. It's a, it's a pretty big deal, and we appreciate it, thank you.
So, gentlemen, you can't sit yet, because we're gonna take a picture together after I have some words from my colleagues. But I would like to say congratulations again. Riley High School is a baby of mine. I coached Riley High School Girls Basketball for 17 years, so Coach, you have been a stellar coach, mentor, and I really appreciate your service and everything you do for the students at Riley High School and the kids in our community. Thank you. At this time, I'll turn it over to council. Are there any comments? Rachel Tomas Morgan.
Yes, I'd just like to extend my congratulations to you, gentlemen, on a, uh, amazing season. Congratulations to you and your accomplishments. I have no doubt that you are as exemplary out of the pool as you are in the pool.
Thank you. Councilor Warner.
Keep up the great work. I had a daughter that was a swimmer. I know you gotta get up at 4:30 in the morning and get to the pool, and after school, you go to the pool. I remember how excited I was junior year when she could drive herself, and I didn't have to drive her to all those things. That says a lot about your dedication, your hard work. Keep that up, that'll serve you very well in life. I wish this got as much news as the bad things that happened in your school and was on the front paper, but we'll make sure to champion it and, uh, yell out loud about your successes in the city of South Bend. Thank you.
That's good. Councilor Lee.
I would like to just commend you all, especially Coach and, and Principal Henderson. When you walk into Riley, you see that it is a family, and those kids will, will knock down doors for their principal and their coach. And so I'm extremely proud, because Tristan was one of my, 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 one of my members of my church. And then when he, I mean, I was there when he was born, and, and to see him grow up to be such a fine young man doing great things, I'm so proud of him, and I'm so proud of all of you all. You look nice, you wear ties, and you, you look good, so, uh, continue, continue to strive, continue to do great things, and maybe one day we'll see you all in these seats.
Thank you. Councilor Niszkowski.
Uh, thank you. Yeah, um, it's, it, it's a proud moment for all of us here to have you before us. You young men are just amazing, dedicated, your parents getting up in their equal dedication to support you, your coaches, the principal. It's amazing, so I know as you go forth in life, this is gonna be a foundation for you all. I'm excited to see what's gonna happen, as maybe perhaps you all go to college, swimmers, Olympics. The opportunities are endless for all of you, so congratulations, and be proud of yourself because you earned it. Thank you.
Councilor Hammond.
Thank you. Gentlemen, what a great day for you. And seniors, congratulations on an amazing final season. And to everyone else, the underclassmen, ready to take the baton and move this team again to success, and we'll be watching, we're very proud of you.
Thank you. Councilor Davis.
As our public school corporation is obviously under the attack, I keep hearing how great Riley High School is, and how it's the silent champion of South Bend. I, I, I'm not just saying that because it sounds good, I'm saying that because that's what I'm hearing. Obviously, I have a 14-year-old, and we're looking for a high school for him, and so I keep hearing how great the school is. So I would say to the leadership of the school, congratulations, great job, thank you for your efforts in leading. Coach, as well, because you're part of our leadership team. Boys, gentlemen, young men, keep representing, congratulations, keep representing, and thank you for being a great representation of South Bend and South Bend schools.
Thank you. Councilor White, online, you have some comments?
Yes, I do. I would first like to thank the coach, as well as the principal, Chief Ruskowski, as well as the students on the fine job that they've done to not only be city champions for the Northern Indiana Conference, but second sectional champions, and then the state sixth overall. And this was just years of commitment, dedication, making good decisions, and working towards their common goal. I would like to also recognize the principal, Mr. Henderson, who has allowed me to come into Riley High School for at least eight years to do the work that I tremendously enjoyed. And so again, it is an excellent high school, and I commend all the leaders, but also the parents and the students themselves on a job well done.
Thank you. And at this time, I will turn it over to the public. I dare not anticipate an answer. I, um, if there's anyone who would like to speak against this resolution. Seeing none, thank you so much. I would have, Chief Ruskowski would like to make some comments. Councilor Davis.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I didn't acknowledge Chief Ruskowski either, I'm sorry when I was making my comments. What, what do you do? I, I didn't hear that. What, what do you do? I mean, I see you got some son, your sons is on a.
He's a very good parent and produced really fast swimmers, that's his primary role.
That's it? That's what's going on here?
And he also announces at her meets.
Okay, gene pool, right, good DNA, man. Okay, thank you. Hey, gentlemen, do you guys know that your principal is a very good singer? Nah, I'm being, I'm being straight-up serious, man. I've been knowing Shawn since we were kids. I get to call him Shawn, you guys don't, but he, he can sing. Have him sing the Star-Spangled Banner one time before a meeting start.
Thank you, Chief Ruskowski.
Mr. Henderson, you need the mic? No. Okay. No, just, I just want to reiterate a couple of things that, that Coach and Mr. Henderson said. What people don't realize, and I know, Mr. Warner, you do, you've, you've been there, done that, and it is, it is, look, it's mostly moms in my house, because they're in no way trying to get me out at 3 o'clock, 3:30 in the morning, is almost an impossible task, but she's done it. And typically, that's what happens with all the boys' moms that are here. So 3:00 a.m. making peanut butter and jelly sandwiches, whatever, other kind of snacks that go with them throughout that morning. Then they're done swimming, showered up, get dressed, go to class, endure all the class, try to, try to keep the grades maintained or high, highest. And then, so the school's out, right back in the pool, and it's usually 7:00 o'clock or so. But Coach is there before anybody else gets there, and Coach is the last one that leaves. And again, I know he said it, but most of the boys on this team have been with him since they were seven years old competitively. My boys started swimming with him, I fed three to pass under John's wing for, since they were seven years old. So I think that's, that's very notable, and when you look at all the, these, most of these boys here have played other sports, mine included, but there is no other sport, and trust me, give me an inner tube and something else that floats next to me, a libation of sorts, and that's, that's my extent, but to do that for four or five. But to do that for four or five hours a day, six days a week, the only days they take off is Christmas and Sundays. So there's no other sport in anywhere that has that requirement, that mandate, and that drive to keep doing what they've done to stand here before you all. So just a shout out, and again, I want to thank the council personally for recognizing usually what's not recognized, the hard work, the dedication, and the perseverance. I know that's an understatement that these young men have put in since they were seven years old.
Thank you. At this time, we would like to thank the parents again who have been committed to the sport and to your children, and thank you for the mentoring that you have done as well. With that being said, I'll turn to my colleagues. What say you? I would like to entertain a motion for passage of this resolution.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion carries. With that, we're going to take a picture. Counsel, if you can come down. Thank you.
We need somebody to step up here.
Taller ones on the top, shorter at the bottom.
Sharon, may I say one more thing?
Absolutely.
So I just want to double check what's said here is on public record. Is that correct?
Yes.
I just want to add that we beat Penn, so just put that there.
At this time, Clerk Jones, could you give Resolution 2312 a public reading?
2312, publicly recognizing the Indiana Athletic Trainers Association and acknowledging the Month of March as National Athletic Training Month.
Thank you. A special resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend.
Sheila Nizgatsky, 4942, Scenic Drive. A special resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, publicly recognizing the Indiana Athletic Trainers Association and acknowledging the Month of March as National Athletic Training Month. Whereas the Indiana Athletic Trainers Association was founded in 1984 as an organization committed to the education of its members and the enhancement of the profession of athletic training, creating better health care for the population it serves. And whereas athletic trainers from professional collegiate and high school teams, industries, physician offices, rehabilitation clinics, and every branch of the United States military work together to promote and practice the profession of athletic training within the city of South Bend. And whereas the athletic trainers have a long history of providing quality health care for athletes and persons engaged in regular physical activity. And whereas athletic trainers are highly skilled health care professionals who specialize in immediate, acute, and emergency care, examination, assessment, and diagnosis, injury prevention, risk management, therapeutic intervention, and rehabilitation of injury and illness. And?
Whereas the National Athletic Trainers Association represents and supports more than 45,000 members of the athletic training profession, including more than 1,930 athletic trainers in the state of Indiana. And whereas leading organizations concerned with athletic training and health care have united in the common commitment to raise public awareness of the importance of the profession of athletic training and the role of athletic trainers in the provision of quality health care services. And whereas it is the desire of the city of South Bend to promote improved health care for athletes and all of those who engage in physical activity. And whereas Mayor Mueller has previously proclaimed the Month of March as National Athletic Training Month and called upon the residents of South Bend to recognize athletic trainers for their honorable work in keeping the community healthy. Now therefore be resolved by the common council of the city of South Bend as follows. The city of South Bend is unique in the availability of both athletic and medical resources. The uniqueness makes it appropriate for the common council to acknowledge the valuable services athletic trainers provide not only to athletes but to all who need quality health care services. The common council joins with Mayor Mueller in recognizing athletic trainers for their honorable work in keeping the community healthy. The common council joins Mayor Mueller in recognizing the Month of March as National Athletic Training Month. This resolution shall be in full force and effect and after its adoption by the council and approval by the mayor. With that being said, I'll turn it over to my council colleagues. Oh, Carrie. Is Carrie Hesse here? And Beacon?
Is Carrie here? Oh, come on.
Beaking and Joint Specialists. Thank you, Carrie. I was just getting ready to run right over you, Carrie. Thank you. Come on up. Say your name and address, please.
Carrie Hesse, 60709 Rudelocky Strive, South Bend, 46614. I just want to thank the common council for recognizing athletic training. I'm from Beacon Health System, and we provide athletic trainers at many of the area schools, including all four South Bend high schools, IUSB and Holy Cross here in South Bend. They are a under-recognized medical professional or profession, and their scope is vast. They not only provide, a lot of people think they just provide ice and tape on the sideline, but they do a lot of prevention, rehab, assessment, and care coordination. So it's a very under-recognized health profession, and we appreciate you guys recognizing them.
Thank you. Do you want to acknowledge who's with you?
Yes, so with me today, I have Kara Werner Sanders and Trista Hartman from IU South Bend.
Thank you so much for that. We support everything that you do, and I remember even coaching the athletic trainers, helping the coaches out when we were in pain. So I appreciate all of that preventative maintenance that you guys had to take care of us. So thank you so much for your service to our community and to all of our students. And actually, I know adults and everyone else that come under your care. So we really appreciate all the hard work and dedication and commitment that you all have, and it's an honor and a privilege to recognize you for such a job that you said is a thankless job. A lot of people do not give you credit, or you guys are in the background, but you make so many lives better. And healing our bodies is phenomenal, and we definitely thank you for that.
Thank you.
I'll turn it over to my colleagues. You have anything to say, my council colleagues? Counselor Warner.
Thank you. It's honored to be able to recognize you and what you do, and thank you for that.
Counselor Lee.
We are certainly glad to have you all here with us today. And again, I know how important it is. I have a son that plays basketball, and immediately if something happens, it is the athletic trainers that are on the scene helping to navigate that with parents. So I appreciate you guys, and we're so grateful that we could honor you today.
Counselor Wax.
Thank you. And just as someone who has suffered a number of sports injuries during my unprofessional sports career, I can appreciate what you guys do and the service that you provide. So thank you.
Counselor Hammond.
Thank you. Along with Counselor Wax, as a competitive runner, I know the importance of making sure that your injuries are taken care of appropriately. So we thank you and honor you.
Thank you. Counselor Tomas Morgan.
Yes, and I just want to thank the both of you, President McBride and Vice President Nizgatsky, for bringing this resolution before us and allowing us the opportunity to recognize these professionals in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor White.
Yes, just want to add my words of thank you and acknowledgement in terms of all the work that they do on a continuous basis. I can attest to the fact that I have a grandson who the doctor told us when he was about two years old that he will be seeing a lot of him as well as the coaching staff and the athletic directors, and he was correct. And so I know the work you do, and I sincerely appreciate that.
Thank you so much. At this time, I will turn again to the public. I take it that means nobody is opposing this resolution? Not that I'm giving them much of a choice today. Counsel, what say you?
Move for acclamation.
Second? It's been moved and seconded and all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion is carried. Thank you.
I just want to note, most of the other athletic trainers are not able to be here today because they're covering events. Literally, the whole group of 20 of us, only two of us could attend.
Kara Werner Sanders, 406 Sweetellisom Court, Mishawaka, Indiana, 46545. I just want to thank the common council because as an under-recognized profession, that it seems like only the athletic world understands what we do. And a lot was brought to the spotlight in the NFL with the recent issues that happened with Damar Hamlin. That's what we do every single day, and we're here to protect and help keep everyone safe. And we can't tell you how much it means to us to be recognized, even though a vast majority of us couldn't be here because we're out covering our events and doing our job. But it means a lot because for a very long time, I've been in the profession for a very long time, people don't recognize you as medical professionals and don't realize what you're there to do and that you're there to save people's lives and prevent them and keep them doing the things that they love. So we can't tell you how much we appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. It's for you. Thank you so much. At this time, we will have reports for the city.
Good evening, council members. Caleb Bauer, Executive Director of Community Investment, with offices on the 14th floor of this building. Like I mentioned during committee, since the middle of last year, we have been undertaking our comprehensive plan review and update process. And I'm excited to introduce Mark Funkhauser of Funkhauser and Associates, who have been undertaking, along with Lawrence Greenspun from the Drucker Institute, a comprehensive engagement process for the comprehensive plan. And what the deliverable they're providing for you today is a roadmap for us as we now begin the process of drafting that plan. So we're not at the end of the comprehensive plan process. We're in the middle of it, but we wanted to check in, give you an update, share the roadmap. And with that, I will turn it over to Mark.
Thank you so much.
Mark Funkhauser, 24 Colros Drive, Rocky Point, New York. Thank you. It's a pleasure to be before this council. I want to talk for a second or two about why we're here. The city hired us to implement a rigorous community engagement campaign to help bring the community's vision into the process of developing the next comprehensive plan for South Bend and to help determine the priorities for the plan as well as how the plan could be structured, the framework, so that its goals and vision could be brought to life. We started this project in mid-April of last year, so it's been almost a year that we have been working on this and to bring it to this point. I wanted to just talk for a minute about who we are and why we might be competent and qualified to do the work that we've done. Funkhauser and Associates is a consulting firm founded on the idea that we can build better government by building trusted relationships and sharing ideas and solutions to empower the work of public servants. Myself, I have been the mayor of Kansas City, Missouri, a city of over a half million people. I spent a long time as a government performance auditor, looking at the efficiency and effectiveness and equity with which government services are provided. And I have spent most of my career talking to and working with local government officials, interviewing them, writing about them. And that work has informed our work on this plan. We see that local governments can be a catalyst for innovation and opportunity and cross-sector collaboration. And we work with local leaders and their allies to help them make decisions based on data and evidence and meaningful engagement and smart fiscal policy. And we also help to translate those choices into strategic plans. Policy is aspirational. FNA works across sectors to help connect the dots between policy and process, between population data and improved community outcomes, and between technology and more human-centered I want to talk a little bit about what we did. In this report, you have a 29-page report that is the framework that we have developed. And connected to it are many links to takeaways and other documents. There are dozens and dozens and dozens of pages of data behind the 29 pages that we've given you. But before I talk about our methods, I want to just acknowledge the support that we've gotten from you, the common council, and from city staff throughout this process. You've been very involved, and we've...
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be before this council. I want to talk for a second or two about why we're here. The city hired us to implement a rigorous community engagement campaign to help bring the community's vision into the process of developing the next comprehensive plan for South Bend and to help determine the priorities for the plan as well as how the plan could be structured, the framework, so that its goals and vision could be brought to life. We started this project in mid-April of last year. So, it's been almost a year that we have been working on this and to bring it to this I wanted to just talk for a minute about who we are and why we might be competent and qualified to do the work that we've done. Funkhauser Associates is a consulting firm founded on the idea that we can build better government by building trusted relationships and sharing ideas and solutions to empower the work of public servants. Myself, I have been the mayor of Kansas City, Missouri, a city of over a half million people. I spent a long time as a government performance auditor, looking at the efficiency and effectiveness and equity with which government services are provided. And I have spent most of my career talking to and working with local government officials, interviewing them, writing about them. And that work has informed our work on this plan. We see that local governments can be a catalyst for innovation and opportunity and cross-sector collaboration. And we work with local leaders and their allies to help them make decisions based on data and evidence and meaningful engagement and smart fiscal policy. And we also help to translate those choices into strategic plans. Policy is aspirational. FNA works across sectors to help connect the dots between policy and process, between population data and improved community outcomes, and between technology and more human-centered I want to talk a little bit about what we did. In this report, you have a 29-page report that is the framework that we have developed. And connected to it are many links to takeaways and other document. There are dozens and dozens and dozens of pages of data behind the 29 pages that we've given you. But before I talk about our methods, I want to just acknowledge the support that we've gotten from you, the common council, and from city staff throughout this process. You've been very involved and we've been deeply appreciative. We've done a number of types of engagements. We did city agencies where we talked down and talked with city teams. We did individual interviews with department heads. We developed thematic workshops, so around issues like housing and workforce and education. We did community events that you participated in. We did neighborhood-level workshops. We connected with community organizations like Goodwill and United Way. And we had a speaker series where we had experts come and talk about issues like transportation and mobility and housing. What we wanted to do was listen and learn and strategize. So, the listen and learn identified the dots and the ways that the city might better connect those dots via ultimately the comprehensive plan. And to help equip the strategy was to help city departments and teams in their strategic planning efforts to help them plug into the comprehensive plan their own individual department strategic plans. And an example of those that is in the report that we've given you is the case study of the Office of Sustainability. And then finally, to activate community participation, we did the thematic workshops to provide input on the vision for SB 2045 and to also spark ideas about how different stakeholders could contribute and collaborate and connect with each other. And the example in the in the report is the case study on housing. So, what we intended to do and what I think we succeeded to do is, as the slide says, we tried to lay down a foundation for a community-driven, fiscally-sound, comprehensive plan that cultivates connections between the assets and the strengths that you have here in South So, what we learned, well, first, those strengths. And what one of the participants in one of the workshops, I think the housing workshop, said to us, "South Bend has great ingredients. What we need is a recipe or a method to connect those ingredients together." And that's what we think we have found. And I'll talk first about the place. So, you have Notre Dame, you have the St. Joe River, you have the proximity to urban and industrial hubs, you have developable land, and you have anchor institutions. You have a lot of strengths in terms of the place. In terms of the people, you have an entrepreneurial community that is very strong. You have an incredible amount of hometown pride and you have strong community organizations. And then in terms of the resources, the city itself is on a very solid financial foundation. You have adequate reserves, you have good liquidity, you have made timely and appropriate payments into your pension funds, which many cities have not done, and you've found ways to provide public services at a pretty good cost. What needs to happen now is that those there are opportunities to take those resources and develop them more efficiently and more effectively. The the opportunities, so the opportunities, first, this idea of defining a common strategy. And we think that that can be defined around the idea of connections, a more concentrated focus on the basics. And by the basics, we mean things like public safety, racial equity, trust, education. And then promoting to build collective impact and then to promote connections. And throughout, in workshop after workshop, meeting after meeting, what people told us was, "We need more connection. We need to bring things together. We have these assets and strengths that are not, they don't know about each other, they're not talking to each other, they don't work with each other as well as they could." So, what we recommend, we have developed and we recommend a framework that promotes connections around a more prosperous South Bend. Now, some people, I do a lot of work in economic development and people talk about, "Well, what we need are jobs." Jobs isn't, jobs is a mean toward an end. What you want is prosperity. You want people to have the resources that they need to support their families and thrive. That could be jobs, but it could be lots of other things. It could be ways that they save money in their, you know, in the daily life, it's ways that they build wealth. So, we came down to three critical values that we think the plan should support: security, dignity, and prosperity. And you bring those things together and connect the people, place, and resources. this next slide here, so the idea, again, what we heard over and over was the idea of trust and to build more trust and build those connections. And so, what we wanted to do is show you here in a more graphic way what we have in mind, which is that you take, for example, the issue of security. And you have economic security, which can come through workforce development, which can come through something, you know, say DEI, DENI initiatives. So, these things cut across those pillars and they're not necessarily the assignment of a specific department, but the comprehensive plan that the city develops should bring all those things together. So, the roadmap that we've developed, you know, first, this idea of building connective tissue. The plan itself should illustrate steps to build connective tissue with a focus on security, prosperity, and dignity. The plan implementation, so prioritizing should be around those three values. But the ongoing planning and engagement, there needs to be a strategic planning component for the city government itself. How is the city government going to implement the comprehensive plan? The comprehensive plan looks at everything, at all the community, but within that is the city government. One of the things that we think that it needs to have is a dynamic website. This afternoon at the committee meeting, Councilmember Hammond, you asked about trust and transparency. And I talked a lot at that time about the financial, the need for more financial transparency. But one of the things that I forgot to say this afternoon, which I would mention now, is that the way that we envision the comprehensive plan being developed is that it will be on the website, that it will be dynamic, that citizens can go look at any time and see where the city is in terms of the implementation of the comprehensive plan so that they know, "Oh, this is where we are, this is what's next on the path forward." One of the things that we think needs to happen and we have in our recommendations is that there needs to be the creation of a position, something like a deputy mayor for operations. And we look at lots of cities and talk to lots of cities. And you need someone who functions, if this were a council manager city, it would be someone who functions as a city manager or as a chief administrative officer, working with and for the mayor, but taking on the day-to-day operational management decisions that need to happen to bring city forces more closely together so that they're all in sync and working. So, you have leadership, political leadership, which of course, the mayor provides. But then you also have management. And the management, we think, could be strengthened by the creation of this deputy mayor position. And the other thing that we see that we think needs to happen is that the police department itself needs to be more integrated into city government. It needs to be brought more closely into connection with things like parks and venues, public works, and so on. And then, so going down through, so that's now I've talked about the city operations, areas of investment and grants. So, we've looked at investment in three ways. First, we looked at it in terms of the values. So, where would we spend money that would support the value of prosperity? Where would we spend money that would support the value of security? Where would we spend money that would support the value of dignity? And we laid that out. Then we go to sustainability and where would we spend money in terms of sustainability? And then we go to the issue of federal grants in general. What are the federal grants that seem to be appropriate for the city? And we're looking at this in two, you know, first, there's the sustainable investment. But then, one of the things that we recommend that we see is that there are federal grants that you could get that you haven't got because you don't have the capacity, the staff capacity, to go out and get them and do the work that you need to do to apply and then manage the grants. And so, we think that the city needs to create a dedicated grants management function that would go after this money. And we think we think you're leaving money on the table. So, that's it. We've developed this framework and roadmap, but we're handing it off now to the city staff. And it's, I told Caleb in one of our calls, "We've just dumped a lot of work on you because they have now the job to take all that data and all that information and the framework that we've given them and develop a written comprehensive plan." And with that, again, I want to acknowledge your support and the support of the city staff. And of course, I'm happy to answer any questions, respond to any comments.
Thank you. I'll turn to my colleagues, see if you have any questions. Council Hammond.
Thank you so much again for responding and for the amazing work that was done. Another conversation that we had along our path here was around the idea of an anonymous employee survey. And you had mentioned that you did that yearly when you were mayor. And I'm wondering if that appears here in the plan for retention and just evaluation of the efficiency of departments and such.
Councilmember, we did not specifically put that in this roadmap, but I would tell you again, yes, you should do that. That is a good idea. Regular surveys of city staff to determine their level of engagement and so on. Do they think they're getting adequate training? Do they think they're getting adequate leadership? Where are the sore spots? Where are the problems across the United States right now in local government as well as here? Staffing is a real challenge. And there is, you know, many, many people have left local government and not come back. So, I didn't, we did not put that in here, but I would tell you, yes, I think you should do it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Council Warner.
So, you mentioned one of the biggest issues is connectivity and you kind of used the term connective tissue.
Yes.
So, in practical applications, what does connective tissue look like?
Well, for example, I talked about the need to have the police department more connected. There should be some sort of ongoing meeting, some sort of ongoing engagement strategy where the police department meets with various members of the community and groups within the community. So that, and it's not episodic, it is institutionalized and it goes on forever. And there should be, we, in education, for example, we brought various, you know, Notre Dame and so forth, the other organizations here. And they wanted to set up some sort of regular place that they would, I'm going to turn to Lawrence. Lawrence, yeah?
Lawrence Greenspun, 1507 McKinley Avenue, South Bend 46617. Councilman Warner, so in terms of connective tissue, I'm going to go back to the foundational strategy that we think should be the starting point of everything, which is build trust. And so, to build trust, people need to feel that they're connected to something. And to be connected to something, there need to be systems and lines of communication and engagement that go up, down, and across. So, we got together religious leaders and they were highlighted that there used to be monthly meetings between the mayor and the religious community and that we're very excited to hear that those were coming back because they gives them opportunity to share information. There've been numerous examples of our, let's say, we have a themed workshop on housing. And we brought groups together and people realized they were working on the same initiatives but had no idea that other group was doing a similar thing. And sometimes working in parallel, sometimes working almost across purposes. And so, the idea there, in terms of practical ways of doing it, one goes back to the recommendation we're making for how the plan is laid out, that it's public, that it reflects that framework where you saw those three columns and the things going down. And I'll see if I can jump to it quickly. The idea here would be that if the plan looked something like this but was living, somebody could click on Housing Security and it would bring up a new page with all the initiatives related in any way to housing security. And then you could click on one of those and it would show the details of that. So, people being aware of what's going on, we heard over and over again, we have incredible services available, but the people who need them most sometimes are the ones who don't know about them. And so, it's embedding systems of communication, sharing, and trust through things like how you might frame a comprehensive plan, through things like the mayor's efforts to meet in an ongoing way with people, through things like council members, like many of you, who took advantage of opportunities to bring engagement sessions together. And we think that's why out on the side there, it says, "The strategy is to build trust." That every single place at the starting point, it's not what should we do, it's how do we build trust so that when we go to do this, we'll be effective?
Anyone else? Council White.
Yes, I would like to, one, thank you for the presentation. And I don't know if you're ready to release this, but could we get copies? And could this be placed on the website?
Karen, we do have hard copies tonight. It's a long document, but I'm sure we can probably get a link up on the website. Yes, Kate was saying yes, but we do have a hard copy. We'll get you one.
And then, two, the next steps, I don't know if community investment's in a position to talk about those next steps and what that's going to look like. But I do agree, as we begin to look at, I like the word, you know, connective tissues because that's what you're looking at, you know, bringing the community together, making sure that we're building trust. We may think that it's out there, but you know, the issue of transparency. And I think what I've been hearing is the need for individuals to feel valued and that their voices are being heard. I think this process was the beginning of that, just based on the number of citizens and stakeholders and just the whole process. I felt that it was a great process and that we are able to move forward. And I do like how, you know, the strategy starts out with build trust, but then it looks at the security, look at the development, the opportunities. And so, again, it's about relationships and it's about bringing people together, but most importantly, you know, we have a good story to tell.
Thank you. Anyone else? Oh, Mr. Bauer.
Yes, just to follow up on what Councilmember White asked just about what's next. So, where we'll go from here is our team will begin the process of taking this roadmap and drafting it into a formalized comprehensive plan. At which point, when we have a draft to share, we would take that back to the community for another round of feedback and iteration. And then we would hope to bring a finalized version to you potentially near the end of this year, early 2024, for your consideration for adoption.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Nitskatsky.
First, I'd like to thank you for the presentation. Again, I know you gave it in committee earlier today, but thank you so much for the engagement in our community. It's so important. And I believe these are important initiatives that you listed. My question is, this is mandated by state statute, I believe, for the comprehensive plan. So, what is the timeframe that this needs to meet that requirement?
It would have to be adopted by the end of 2026 per state statute. So, we've got a few years.
Because that's a lot of information in there to put, fill in those little.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Lee.
Yep, I would just like to say thank you to Lawrence and to Mr. Funkhauser. for the engagement that we were able to have in a community and really getting to the brass tacks of what the community wants. And so, I am very excited about the development of this plan. And not only that, the implementation of it so that we can continue to serve the communities in the way that they're heard and they're a part and connected. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would just like to add again, thank you so much for the hard work that you all have been committed to. Mr. Greenspun, we spent a lot of time together, a lot of meetings. And your dedication and commitment to the community and the work that you're doing and the passion that you have shown to this entire community is, doesn't go unnoticed. We thank you so much for all that you have done. And also to you, Mr. Funkhaus, you have been present and available and here and learning and knowing our community. And I commend you on that work as well. Thank you so much.
I've spent a lot of time in South Bend and it's been an honor, a privilege to come here. Thank you.
Thank you. I also want to take the time to say thank you to Councilor White. I know that she had started the residential neighborhood team some years ago. And this is, she's gone out to the community and had meetings with the administration and the council and the community as well, seeing what did we want and our residents want here in the city of South Bend. And we have developed the council's wish list from that and have gotten a lot of things done as far as curbs and sidewalks and lighting throughout the city and a number of other things. So, just want to say thank you for that because this definitely ties into the bigger picture of this greater master plan. And with that.
President McBride.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Did we ever get?
Councilor Davis.
Did we ever get an answer about the dollar amount that was spent?
Mr. Bauer, thank you.
Yes, so in the not-to-exceed contract of $200,000, so far, spent is $147,497.83.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Okay. And if you are here for Bill 1423 that has been tabled until April the 10th regarding the bedbugs and also Bill 1523 that has been tabled indefinitely. So, I don't want to waste your time if you are here for those two bills. Thank you. With that said, we will move on to the Committee of the Hold. I would like to entertain a motion to resolve into the Committee of the Hold.
So moved.
Thank you. It's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Aye.
The motion's carried.
We have one member online, so we have to do a roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry, we have to do a roll call. I heard the "aye," but you're absolutely right. Thank you so much. Clerk Jones, the roll, please.
Councilmember White. Councilmember White. Can you hear me?
Council, Councilor White.
Aye, I can hear Clerk Jones.
Okay.
But aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond.
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Wax.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you.
The Committee of the Hold is now in session. This is the portion of the council's meeting where bills are given a second reading in public hearing. I wish to share with you that the bills that will be given a second reading in public hearing have been given a first reading and set for a committee meeting and public hearing prior to this evening's meeting. In addition, you will hear from the chairperson of the committee where the bill was discussed and the results of their discussion. If the proposed ordinance is a zoning ordinance, a report from a staff member will be given. In all other situations, the formal presentation on the proposed ordinance will immediately follow the committee report. The formal presentation shall be on time. Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill 0-7-23 a second reading?
Yes. 07-23, Public Hearing on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, Amending the Zoning Ordinance for Property Located at 1007 and 1011 Howard Street, Council-Mannick District Number 4 in the City of South Bend, Indiana.
Is there a committee report?
Yes, Chair, this came before zoning and annexation this afternoon and comes to us this evening with a favorable recommendation.
As a petitioner present, I ask that you state your name and address and share with us key points regarding the bill that is before us.
Good evening, Angela Smith, zoning administrator for the City of South Bend with offices located on the 14th floor. I do have to start by saying I am raising two proud Wildcats right now. So, I was excited to see Riley here today. So, that's our school. The petition before you today at 1007 and 1011 Howard is just adjacent to, or just west of Eddie Street Commons, across from the new townhome development and to the northwest of the Trader Joe's site. So, that's where we're located. The petitioner is looking to rezone this from U1 Urban Neighborhood 1, which is primarily a single-family residential district, to NC Neighborhood Center District. You can see in the zoning map that we have U1 to the north and west and NC to the east, yeah, east and south. So, it's consistent with what's generally in the area. And the lot that's at the corner of Francis and Howard provides a nice buffer between this and the. So, the, this lot will work as a transition between Eddie Street Commons to the west, or to the east, and the single-family homes to the west. So, that'll provide some transition in there. The site's currently vacant and ready for development. You can see here, the access would be from the same alley that falls between them and Eddie Street Commons. The proposed use would be for the Notre Dame Law Clinic. This is a preliminary site plan that shows the orientation of the building along with the associated parking that would be there. They're still working through final site plan and anything that would defer, or differ from the zoning district would have to go in front of the Area Board of Zoning Appeals if they needed any variances. At this point, we're not necessarily anticipating that, but this is just a note that I always make when I'm doing these. This comes to you from the Plan Commission with a favorable recommendation. This provides a nice transition, like I said, between Eddie Street Commons to the east and the residential to the west. I'd be happy to answer any questions, but the petitioner is here.
Petitioner, would you like to have anything to say?
My name is Wayne Richardson. I'm with Birch Franklin Associates, 811 Lawrence Drive, Fort Wayne, Indiana. As stated, the current zoning is U1 Urban Neighborhood 1. These are two currently vacant lots. We're requesting rezoning to Neighborhood Center. This would allow a professional office building. We are planning a three-story tall building with no residential units in the building. And the majority of clients coming to the building will be on an appointment basin basis, but this would also potentially allow walk-ins at some point in the future. Notre Dame Law School has three clinics already on Howard Street and the 700 block of Howard Street. That would be the one furthest to the left or furthest to the west on this. That space is not big enough for those three, so they also lease space on the south side of Howard Street in the 800 block. This proposed building would actually house all three of those clinics and another clinic. The four clinics that would be at this location would be Applied Mediation, which helps in civil matters. They would do a community development, which is supposed to help nonprofit organizations and small businesses. They would have the housing clinic here would represent low-income clients, preventing eviction, securing affordable housing. And the Exacation Justice Clinic would also be located at this location, looking to overturn wrongful convictions. As you can see in the Northeast Neighborhood Plan, our site is highlighted, or is outlined in red. The Northeast Neighborhood Plan had already shown this, these two lots to be combined to have parking and joint development across the lots. Notre Dame is only looking to rezone these two lots at this time and develop these two lots. They also own the lot to the north and the lot to the west, which we are not currently rezoning at this time. This is a similar image. You can see these are undeveloped lots and it faces the back of Foundry South, which is part of Eddie Street Commons. On our site plan, what you see is a three-story office building. We have parking access, access off the alley to the east. That parking would be shielded from the Francis Street Residential by our building. You see the public walk on Howard, along Howard Street is going to be replaced. We also have our sidewalk that will access the north side of the building for the employee entrance and our accessible entrance on the south side for the main entrance to the building. This is on south elevation, so this is looking from Howard Street North. It has a more residential feel than typical office building. The west and east elevations would be similar without a main access door. Notre Dame has reached out and worked with both the surrounding neighbors in the area. And they've also went to meetings of the Northeast Neighborhood Council and the Northeast Neighborhood Revitalization Organization. Both of those organizations have issued letters of support for this project. Overall, we believe that this project honors the Northeast Neighborhood Plan. It offers a great transition from the Eddie Street, the more dense Eddie Street Commons to the east, going to the west to the single-family homes. The land use will complement the area. It will increase property values in the area. And then, the use of the site will benefit all of South Bend. These services are open to the full community and beyond. So, we hope to have you guys vote in favor of rezoning. And I'm here to answer any questions.
All right, councilmembers, do you have any question for the petitioner? We had a good discussion during, during the committee meeting. At this time, we'll go to the public hearing portion. Clerk Jones, is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill 07-23?
I don't see anyone in the virtual public that is expressing interest to speak in favor of this bill.
Is there anyone in the audience wanting to speak in favor of it? Okay. If not, is there anyone present wishing to speak in opposition? Is anyone online?
No, there's no one in the virtual audience that is expressing interest to speak in opposition as well.
At this point, the public hearing on Bill 07-23 is now closed. Councilmembers, would you like to make any statements? Mr. Wax.
Thank you. Just want to say that the legal clinic is an incredible opportunity. First of all, I wish we had a facility like this in University of Maryland where I was in law school. But it provides an incredible opportunity for both people from the community who otherwise wouldn't have access to legal services due to both the expense and the limited availability of pro bono resources. And it provides an incredible experience, an opportunity for law students to really learn what it means to practice. I could say from my own experience that I learned more about practicing law in my, in my courses or my clinic hours than I did in the rest of law school. So, the South Bend Law Clinic is a great resource and a great benefit to the City of South Bend. And I'm happy that we could participate in a little way with this. Anyone else?
I just would say ditto to Mr. Wax as an attorney, that on-the-job training for anything is vital. And not only does it help our community tremendously, but it helps sharpen your skills. I want to recognize the university for going out and knocking on doors in the neighborhoods and making a couple adjustments regarding concerns that neighbors had. And I'm excited about this project. I know the neighbors are. And I'm also excited about maybe in the future having some discussions about the buildings to the west on Howard Street where it currently houses the clinics and maybe some additional housing for the neighborhood there. So, thank you.
Yes.
I'd be remiss if I didn't share a couple words. When my husband and I moved back to South Bend for graduate school, my husband Peter went to Notre Dame Law School and spent many hours in the Notre Dame Legal Aid Clinic as a student practitioner and learned a lot from faculty there, helped to serve the community in numerous ways. And because of that experience, is a committed public interest lawyer to this day. I owe a lot to Notre Dame Legal Aid Clinic and the university. Thank you.
President McBride.
Thank you. I would just like to say thank you. I think this is a great opportunity, especially to continue to provide services to our community, specifically with tenants and housing because we know that that is a crisis, especially in South Bend and throughout the country and the nation. So, thank you for your services. And also, with me being the director of Ducom Center, we have a lot of clients who utilizes the legal services as well for their claims and what they have going on with the court system. So, thank you for extending this service to the community and the continued outreach that you're having and the connection that we're growing closer and closer with partnership in Notre Dame. So, thank you so much for your service.
If not, I will say this. Doing the work that I did with group violence intervention and being able to have a place that we can refer people to, to get the help and the services when we could no longer help them has been a valuable tool. And if I'm not mistaken, when we did the expungement clinics in 2020, it was the law students who helped process a lot of those applications. And the clerk office in the county was very upset with us because we had a lot of people who got a lot of paperwork through. So, thank you all for what you have done. And then, the fact that you guys are going to build a three-story building to be able to house all of that and to be able to still offer those services to the community, we appreciate it and we thank you for your investment in the community and the help that you give people that may not be able to afford it. And so, with that being said, I will now entertain a motion regarding Bill 07-23.
Make a motion to send the bill to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Clerk Jones, please call the roll.
Yes. Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis. President McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Wax.
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember, Councilmember Hammond.
Aye.
And Councilmember White.
Aye.
We have nine ayes.
All right. Bill 0-22 will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. I will now entertain a motion to rise from the committee of the hold and report back to the full council.
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and second. Clerk Jones, please call the roll.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond.
Aye.
Vice President Niskowski.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Wax.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
All right. We will now resolve back to the full council.
We are now on bills on third reading. The full council is now back in session. This is the portion of our meeting where bills are given a third reading and action is taken regarding bills that were heard in the committee of the hold. Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill 7-23 a third reading?
Third reading on an, sorry, 723, third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, amending the zoning ordinance for property located at 1007 and 1011 Howard Street, Councilmanic District Number Four in the city of South Bend.
Thank you. Councilman Lee, is there a recommendation for the committee of the hold regarding Bill 07-23?
Yes, Bill 07-23 was heard in the committee of the hold, and it comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
I would now like to entertain a motion regarding Bill 723.
Move for passage to Bill 723.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, the roll, please.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Wax.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond.
Aye.
Vice President Niskowski.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Bill 7-23 has been adopted. Resolutions. This is the portion of the council meeting where the common council hears bills filed as proposed resolutions. The title of these proposed resolution is read by the city clerk. A report from the committee chairperson of the standing committee to which the bill is referred to for an advisory review and recommendations is then given. During the public portion, on each proposed resolution, members of the public are invited to address the council. We ask that you please give your name, address, and comments on the bill. If you have any questions, they will be addressed by the presenter during their rebuttal. Each member of the public is limited to five minutes, with those speaking in favor going first followed by those in opposition, then a five-minute rebuttal for the presenter of the bill. Clerk Jones, will you please give Resolution 2311 a reading?
2311, a resolution of the common council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as 213 West Washington Street, South Bend, Indiana 46601, an economic revitalization area for purposes of an eight-year real property tax abatement for apartments and commercial space at Tower, at Washington Apartments at Tower at Washington Square LLC.
Thank you. Is there a committee report?
Yes, President McBride, this came to Community Investment Committee this afternoon and comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Presenter, please state your name and address.
Eric Lovich, Director of Growth and Opportunity within the office, excuse me, within the Department of Community Investment with offices on the 14th floor of this building. Council, before you, before you, for your consideration is a declaratory resolution for a mixed-use, mixed-use development real property tax abatement for the building commonly known as Liberty Tower, which is 213 West Washington Street. This building has quite a history in South Bend. If you go back about 10 years ago, it was quite an eyesore. It was deteriorating. It was at the point where development of the building was going to be a challenge. A developer came in and invest, has invested in the last decade over $40 million to remodel the building. First phase was the new hotel, which is the Aloft Hotel, and remodel of the parking garage. The second phase involved retail space and exterior improvements to the building. It's a, it's a beautiful building. As you see, the paint job is, you know, if you, you know, I don't think I need to remind any of you what it looked like 10 years ago. The developer is ready to begin phase three of the rehabilitation. Phase three is dealing with the apartments in the building. So, the plan is for the developer to build 90 brand-new apartments on the top nine floors of the building. To help proceed with this phase, the petitioner has requested an eight-year tax abatement. In addition to the 90 brand-new apartments, on the seventh floor of the building, there will be public space, including a bar, a lounge, meeting spaces, and an outdoor rooftop space on the seventh floor on the north side of the building. All of this will be open to the public, thus the, thus the project qualifies for a mixed-use abatement. Private investment is expected to be near $15 million at $14.7 million. The petitioner thinks that this project will create about nine full-time jobs, four jobs related to management of the apartment portion of the building, and five jobs related to the bar, lounge, and public spaces. As I mentioned, it's an eight-year abatement. As we've discussed earlier today during the committee meeting, this building has current abatements attached to it. If you go back to 2015, 2016, the building was essentially subdivided into four unique parcels. One parcel for the hotel, one for the apartments, one for the parking garage, and one for the retail space. Each four of those parcels did receive a tax abatement, which council passed in 2016. The first year of each of those tax abatements was 2019. This came up during committee meeting, and currently, as we track all four of these different abatements, each of them is in year five of their current abatement. When we, this, the, the resolution before you, for your consideration, deals only with the apartments. It does not deal with the hotel, parking garage, or the retail space. Interestingly, because of the state's property tax caps, the circuit breaker caps, the current abatement for the apartment complex is pretty much null and void at this point. The current taxes for 2023 on the apartment parcel are $42,000. If you were to remove the abatement, the taxes would be $43,000. So, the abatement at this point is only saving $1,000 for the taxpayer. Current taxes, I mentioned, are $42,000. You know, over the eight years of the abatement, we're looking at estimated $346,000 in taxes. Those are the current taxes that will be, you know, if, if we were to continue on the current track, excuse me, $346,000 under the abatement. The taxes without the abatement would be $43,000. Excuse me, I'm, let me, let me backtrack. I'm sorry, current taxes are $42,000. Throughout the life of the abatement, you'd be looking at $346,000 in current taxes. In the first year of this new abatement, just in the first year alone, you'd be looking at an increase of $30,000 being brought in by the city. You know, the estimated taxes to be paid throughout the entire abatement period over the eight years is about $1.3 million. The taxes abated would be roughly the same, about $1.3 million. You know, estimated taxes after the abatement annually, after the abatement expires, would be about $330,000. And on your screen, you can see what our projections are for the amount of taxes that would be brought in by the apartment complex over certain periods of time. Just to reiterate that this is for the apartment complex only and not for the other aspects of the building, such as the hotel, parking garage, and the retail space. AJ Seim from the Aloft Hotel is here as a representative for the petitioner and would be happy to take any questions that you might have.
AJ Seim, 213 West Washington, 111 North Main, General Manager of the Aloft Hotel. I'm excited to be here tonight to introduce myself as the GM of the Aloft and represent the ownership group of Liberty Tower in South Bend. I'm a proud resident of South Bend and the region, and have been working in hospitality in South Bend for nearly 17 years. The Aloft Hotel is the first phase and successful of the Liberty Tower project. Since opening in September, the Aloft has become a leading hotel in South Bend, enhancing the downtown offerings. It is a great honor to share that our hotel is ranked number two of 37 hotels on TripAdvisor, second to the Morrison and Notre Dame. We're working on that. As we move forward, we are excited to take the next steps to complete this phase of the building with the added commercial venue, food and beverage hospitality space, as well as a significant addition to downtown housing through the residential apartment development within Liberty Tower. We are committed to supporting South Bend's continued growth and success, and we believe that this project will serve as a catalyst for future development in the area. We are grateful for the city's support, and we look forward to working together to make South Bend an even better place to live, work, and visit. Thank you for your time and support, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
I want to say thank you and see if I can turn to my colleagues. Do you have any further comments or questions? Counselor Hammond?
Yes, I was just wondering if we could recap some of the conversation in committee for the benefit of the folks that are on the virtual and in the chamber here. So, we had identified that this is within the same TIF district as the Beacon construction, and Mr. Bauer, you explained why that would not, or this tax abatement would not impact the ability to be able to begin paying back on those bonds. Could you please reiterate?
Yes, thank you. Yes, so the bond that was recently authorized by council to support the Beacon Health and Lifestyle District and the construction of a pair of public parking garages there is based upon projecting out TIF revenues to remain flat over the lifetime of the bond. So, there would be, we're estimating that debt service using no increase in revenues within the River West TIF district, though we anticipate there to be significant increase in those revenues over the lifetime of the bond. We always conservatively estimate no change whenever issuing a bond. So, with this new investment, these would just be additional revenues on top of those that we've already contemplated that would go towards funding the debt service on that debt.
Thank you. And then, secondly, Eric, you did identify that because of the mixed-use nature of this abatement, it did not fall within the requirements for affordable housing.
Correct.
But Mr. Neal did identify that there are one-bedroom apartments. Probably 50% of the 90 apartments being built will be the one-bedroom. Is that correct? If 25?
That is, that is correct. That committee, he had commented that 50% would be one-bedroom, 25% would be studio, the other 25% would be two-bedroom, and there may be some three bedrooms mixed in there.
And just one last question. Do you know what the average price of the one-bedroom would be?
It's, it's an interesting question. As you, Mark Neal, Bradley Company, 112 West Jefferson Boulevard. Right now, interesting from the standpoint of there is no availability in downtown South Bend for residents, for apartments. You can go, whether you go to Central High School, whether you go to the Ivy, whether you go to JMS, there is very little availability of apartments. Right now, because they'll be the last ones into the building, or into the downtown, they are paying the highest construction costs. So, that in some respects will direct what the market rates will be. This is a lengthy answer because there's a lot of moving pieces right now in our community in terms of apartments in downtown. There's, we think high demand. What's interesting about this building is, as it's the tallest building, the first floor of apartments will be on floor 17. That is the highest point of any apartment in South Bend, and it doesn't matter where in South Bend you are. Consequently, we would expect that these units will probably go for $2 a square foot or more. So, on a 600-square-foot one-bedroom or studio, that'd be $1,200. The average, it varies based upon the sizes. Again, the architects are still finalizing the floor plans, but that's consistent with what's being paid for currently at, whether it's the Hibbard, the Ivy, JMS, those are, those are consistent prices. So, it'll, it'll be at the top of the market along with the other newest buildings that are also honestly at the top of the market right now.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Niskowski.
Yeah, I'm just curious, so how many floors is that undeveloped in?
Currently, the nine floors that would house the apartments are undeveloped. Yeah. Yeah, and then on your screen, that is what those floors look like now. They were gutted during, you know, pre-pandemic and have just sat and continue to sit empty as you see.
So, all nine floors look like, look like that? Oh, wow, okay.
Anyone else? Counselor Wax.
So, with this project, is that the full building now, or is?
Yeah, yeah. With, with the completion of this phase, the entirety of the building will be completely remodeled.
Thank you.
Counselor Rachel Tomas Morgan.
Thank you. I have a comment and a question. I just wanted to say I'm really excited to have all the remaining nine floors occupied. Really excited about this project. It is the largest, the tallest building in our downtown and occupies our, our skyscape. And so, it's wonderful to see this project moving along. My question is to, to the Aloft manager, I was wondering what the, this is unrelated to this particular bill, but I was just curious what the, what the, the southern side of the, the building on the first floor, what is going to go into that space?
Yes, so the, this will finish out the building. The Washington side on the south first floor is retail space to be, to be leased.
Okay.
So, once those are leased up, we're seeking tenants actively now.
Great, thank you.
Two, two to three available spaces there.
Counselor Lee.
Yes, so, again, to recap everything, we had a building that was about to be in very bad disrepair, maybe even had to be torn down, and we had an investor come in that was willing to, to invest $40 million to bring the Aloft there and start what, start gutting the, the, the building, which is the largest building in South Bend. And right now, they're paying $42,000, and the estimated taxes is $346,000 over the eight years. And then, the taxes without the abatement is about $43,000. So, we're never, we're not losing money. We're getting investment. We're saving the biggest building, the largest building in South Bend. And then the first year of the new abatement, they will pay $30,000 more in taxes to bringing it to $72,000. So, it really does become a win-win. Plus, we're going to get 90 new apartments, plus a restaurant, rooftop facility, and, amenities for the individuals that live there downtown South Bend. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'll turn to the public. Counselor Davis.
It sounds like Kenneth wants a job in PR for you guys. He does a great job. Now, that's, that's not, that's not called for. I was just stating the facts. I just gave you a compliment. You were just explaining what was going on. Now, you're taking offense to a compliment. That sounds kind of sarcastic. At the end of, and I don't think this is, well, maybe it is a question for you. At the end of the life of the tax abatement, do we understand what the property value of downtown properties would end up being? Is there any projections of that? Because the, the, the building would have to be reassessed, obviously, and, you know, new property value, et cetera. So, do we know what that would end up being? If we're at 1,200 now, eight years down the line, what is like?
So, the, the challenge that we have is an inability to really know what the new assessed values will be. So, our estimations really focus on current tax rates and assuming that the, we assume that the new assessed value is basically going to be the current value of the building, which is about one and a half million dollars, excuse me, focusing solely on the apartments. One and a half million dollars assessed value for the apartments currently, taking 80% of the hard costs that will be invested into that, you would get, our estimate is simply, following completion of the project, that the assessed value of the apartments will be about $12.7 million. You know, whether that will be the actual assessed value in the future, we obviously don't know. But, you know, we feel like that is probably a, you know, safe estimate to make because, you know, as, we know there's great things going on downtown, as there's developments both on the north and south side of downtown, that's only going to drive up the values of properties throughout downtown. So, I would say that this would be a conservative estimate.
And that's what I'm afraid of, right? You're driving the values up so high that those who currently frequent, frequent the downtown area doesn't exist anymore. And then there's a recruitment of people who have, or from another area perhaps, I don't know where they come from, to our downtown area. So, South Bend no longer looks like the South Bend that I grew up in, right? And as a matter of fact, the truth is that nobody probably in this council is going to be able to even pay for an apartment downtown, right? So, it becomes another discussion.
another discussion about our city and who is allowed to live and participate and play in our city. And so I look at those discussions because I have to, you know. We still are dealing with the Housing Authority being offline and so many other issues that relates to housing. And we are not been, we have not been able to realize housing for the working families here in this community. We're realizing housing for people that are potentially coming in or high-dollar earners that we don't have that reality of. So I just have to put that out there. That doesn't mean nothing for or against it. But I think that there needs to be some type of stabilization in our market to ensure that other people will be able to participate. The majority of people that live in the city be able to participate, just not a small percentage.
Thank you for those comments, Councilmember. I think, you know, it's been a priority for me as Executive Director of Community Investment that we focus on affordable housing development. And, you know, we're really proud to be a part of adding 352 new units over the next few years throughout South Bend at affordable rates, be that less than 80% AMI, but also the very affordable, less than 30% AMI level. So that's not something, you know, I don't think this is a zero-sum game, that we can't support the development of market-rate apartments while also realizing that it is very important that we prioritize affordable housing development, and our department has done that.
No, I can challenge you on that. And I'm going to challenge you on that. Where have those, where have we realized those things at? Because the district that I represent, which is where this building is and further west and all the way to the river, we haven't realized that in our district. As a matter of fact, what I can tell you is that more so rest of this building, we went through a really, really difficult time with 1,000 houses in 1,000 days. We're still dealing with it, right? And so all I keep hearing is that we're working on it, we're working on it, or it has happened. And those neighborhoods over there, Brookfield, Hillway, Johnson, I keep going on with the street names, they still look like they did prior or right after the housing was demolished. And we're still suffering from that real estate loss because the schools have also taken the decline. We're almost looking, we're looking at a community school right now that's on Olive Street, that's right around those, looking like not being a school anymore. So we're still reeling from that loss in real estate. Meanwhile, we're seeing the real estate downtown attract and benefit people that don't look like the same people or don't have the same earning capacity as people that, you know, that live here right now. So I can challenge you on that. And I'm not, you know, trying to just have an argument or anything like that, but the reality of this is not what you're presenting to me. The reality is what I see every day and where I live every day.
I'll just correct the record. Two of those affordable housing developments, the Monroe, Deveraux Peters Project, and Real America's Diamond View, are located in your district.
They are. There's been a lot of them that has happened. But we lost over 700 houses in that district. You would never be able to...
Houses that weren't occupied.
Well, we still lost 700 houses, which depleted the ability for investment in real estate in those areas.
Vacant and abandoned houses.
The real estate in those areas have declined drastically. And we can talk about vacant abandoned housing because we could have used programming dollars through HUD to rehabilitate those houses, but I don't want to go down that street. But what I am going to say is that because of that has happened and has taken place, we have not been able to see the benefit of rebuilding of those neighborhoods. Neighborhoods, not apartments, not downtown centralized development.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
I think there were four homes on Pagan Street that Mr. Davis voted against.
What does that have to do with anything? I didn't vote against no homes on Pagan Street.
I believe there was.
You shouldn't lie on me like that. You really shouldn't.
Okay.
I actually would like to add to that as well, just to, so we're correcting misinformation that comes out. There have been, I find it ironic that you talk about caring for affordable housing and investment in your district, Mr. Davis, when you have voted against them.
Prove it. Prove it. You should prove it. If you can say it, you should prove it.
The Diamond View Project you voted against.
Prove it. If it's on record, she takes the records, prove it. All right.
Anyone else?
I'll send a press release out tomorrow with the proof.
Please do. You're welcome.
Anyone else? At this time, I will turn to the public to see if anyone here is wishing to speak in favor of Resolution 23-11. Clerk Jones, do you see anyone in the virtual audience?
I don't see anyone in the virtual audience expressing interest to speak.
Thank you. I'll turn to see if there's anyone in the audience who's wishing to speak against Resolution 23-11.
There's no one in the virtual audience that's expressing interest to speak against this bill as well.
Thank you. At this time, the public portion is now closed. I'll turn back to my colleagues for final comment. Counselor Wax.
Just want to say thank you to the petitioner for their investment in South Bend, turning around a project that potentially would be torn down and instead turning it into one of the pillars and anchors of the downtown South Bend. So thank you for your ongoing investment, and I wish you the best of luck going forward.
Thank you. At this time, we'll take the vote.
I'd like to move for adoption.
Second.
It has been moved in second. Clerk Jones, the role, please.
Yes. Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Can you come back to me?
Okay. Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
I'm sorry, Tomas Morgan. Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Bill number 2311 has been adopted. Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill 2313 a reading?
2313. A resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, recommending to the mayor certain applicants for the position of Director of the Community Police Review Board Office.
Thank you. Is there a committee report?
Yes, this bill comes forward with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. I will turn to my colleagues, Mr. Wax, Vice President Niskoski, and Counselor White, if you'd like to make a comment. Actually, we first have to accept the substitute bill.
Motion to accept a substitute bill.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Clerk Jones, the role, please.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski?
Aye.
President McBride?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. This is the resolution in which the informal committee met and about the Community Police Review Board. And this resolution names two candidates, Stephanie Ball and Charles Keen, that will be submitted to the mayor for his final approval for the hiring of the new Community Police Review Board Director. Anyone else like to make a comment? Counselor Hammond?
I'm just wondering if there is a prescribed timeframe for the mayor to give his decision.
Is it outlined in the resolution, Troy?
No, there is. I don't think so, no.
No. Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I just want to say that I think we have two people that are passionate about our community, that would be good liaisons between the community and the police department, and thankful that we're finally at this point.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'll just say I am grateful that we're finally at this point. It's been a long process, but we wanted to make sure that it was the correct process. I'd like to thank all the people that did apply for this position. We interviewed a lot of people. We looked at a lot of resumes. We interacted with the public. We interacted with our council members here. And I'm glad we're finally to this point. And I believe that the two applicants that we have brought forth are good applicants for the job. And I'm just glad that we're finally through this process, and now we can look to move forward to getting the board going. And just so the public knows, this isn't going to be a process that's going to happen overnight. You have a whole board to seat yet. They have processes that they're going to need to be put in place. So this is going to be a little bit of an ongoing process, but it will be worth it if it will help build community relations with our police officers, the residents, as well as for everybody feeling that they have their voice heard in our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Davis.
Sure, thank you. I, like I said earlier, envisioning this back in 2014, now here we are, nine years later, 2023, thank God. But what I want to continue to be, to say about the Citizens Review Board, it was, it is a conduit, it is a device, it's a tool to build trust with our community. It really has nothing to do with the police department. It has everything to do with members of this community who feel like they've been wronged in their relationship or lack thereof with maybe the South Bend Police Department, is giving them the opportunity to say, hey, I've been done wrong, and giving the local government another layer to say, we're going to investigate it, and we hope to come out with the understanding of what actually went wrong or went right, and so that we can actually make an adjustment and make a recommendation to the Board of Public Safety. So it was, it's more of an idea of giving our residents a better, a better way of trusting local government. It was never built, and it has not been built, to improve our relationship with the South Bend Police Department. It was built to improve the relationship with community members and local government, and how local government oversees some of the practices and their investigation of possible wronged owners. And that's the reason why. It's almost like a third-party overseer.
Thank you. With that, I will turn to the public. Are there any comments? Anyone speaking in favor of Resolution 2313? Clerk Jones, do you see anyone in the visual audience?
There's no one from the virtual audience that's expressing interest to speak in favor of this bill.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience would like to speak in opposition?
There's no one in the virtual audience expressing interest to speak in opposition.
Thank you. The public portion is now closed. I'll turn back to my colleagues. What's your pleasure?
I would like to make a motion for the adoption of Resolution 23-13.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Clerk Jones, the role, please.
Yes. Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
President McBride?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. 2313 has been adopted. Clerk Jones, will you please give 2315 a reading?
2315. A resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, confirming the adoption of a declaratory resolution designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as 2652 Jaclyn Court, South Bend, Indiana, 46614, and 3161 Young's Court, South Bend, Indiana, 46614, economic revitalization areas for purpose of a six-year, of a six-year real property tax abatement for the Robert Henry Corporation.
Thank you. Is there a committee report?
Yes, President McBride, this came to Community Investment Committee this afternoon and comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, presenter.
Eric Lovich, Director of Growth and Opportunity, Department of Community Investment on the 14th floor of this building. Before you, for your consideration, is a confirming resolution. Two weeks ago, council approved a declaratory resolution for the Robert Henry Corporation. The Robert Henry Corporation seeks to move its operations from the Howard Park neighborhood, building new facilities on the southwest edge of town in an industrial park. You can see the two parcels of land where they plan on building on the screen. On one parcel, they will be building their offices and a workforce training center. And on the other parcel, they will be building a new truck bay and truck maintenance facility. This is a six-year abatement. It's an industrial development abatement. The petitioner will be investing roughly $6 million to build these two facilities. Current taxes on the properties combined is slightly over $830. First year of the abatement alone, the estimated taxes will be $1,200. On your screen and in your packets, you can see our projections for what the taxes estimated to be paid and abated will be throughout certain spans of time. During the six-year abatement period, we estimate that the taxes paid will be roughly $580,000, and about $1 million will be abated, quite an increase from what is currently being brought in from these two properties. The petitioner is here to answer any questions that you might have, and I'm happy to answer questions as well.
Counsel, I'll turn to you for comments or questions at this time. Seeing none, I will open it up to the public. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of Bill 2315? Clerk Jones?
There's no one in the virtual audience that's expressing interest to speak in favor of this bill.
Thank you. Is there anyone present wishing to speak in opposition?
There's no one in the virtual audience expressing interest to speak in opposition as well.
Thank you. I'll turn back to counsel. What's your pleasure?
I'll move for the adoption of Bill 2315. Second.
It's been moved in second. Clerk Jones, the role, please.
Yes. Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
President McBride?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Bill 2315 has been adopted.
Thank you for your investment.
Bill's on first reading. Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill 1623 a first reading?
Yes. 1623, first reading on an ordinance of the Common, of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, amending the zoning ordinance for property located at 616, 618 Sherman, Sherman Avenue, Councilmanic District Number One in the City of South Bend, Indiana.
I would like to entertain a motion and send Bill 1623 to South Bend Plan Commission for 417 and to zoning and annexation for public hearing in third reading on April 24.
So move?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Clerk Jones, the role, please.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
President McBride?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Now we'll go to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business from the council?
Yeah. I'm receiving phone calls from neighbors around the Marla Luther King Jr. Center or where it used to be at, and they are concerned by the lack of traffic and activity that's happening on that plot of land over there. Asking for some sort of update from the Parks Department or whomever is over that particular project, because I don't know how to answer the question. I have called and spoken with engineering. There are some things that were stated that I'm not educated over, so I would rather, you know, the experts speak on it rather than I just come up with some type of idea on how that works. But what I did get from the engineering department did sound like a prolonged process as a is ahead of us as it relates to the erection of the Dream Center. So, I'm asking that there is a report probably from engineering or Parks Department or both at the next council meeting.
Thank you.
And then, secondly, I went on a tangent earlier when Mr. Pete Augustin was in here and we talked about tax abatement, and one thing that did come up when he and I began to talk about it, the assertion that we need a pilot program here in South Bend, and I think I've said that before, as it relates to nonprofits. Nonprofits are close to 50% of our land, and those folks are not taxed. So, that's a part of the same discussion about the amount of money, the assessed values that are raised because other people are paying for other people or other businesses are paying for other businesses. So, just an idea, just a thought. I don't know if anyone else would be interested in jumping on a policy change as it relates to pilot programming, but if 48 to 50% of our land is nonprofit, chances are we're going to, something's going to go wrong as it relates to what I was talking about, the tax abatements and the amount of monies that are not being collected that need to be collected outside of the TIP districts. I'm finished.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Counselor Lee?
So, Mr. Davis, you're asking, you're saying that you want to do a pilot program so that nonprofits and churches would be taxed? Is that what you're asking?
No, I'm not asking that. I'm asking that not, okay, 50% of our land, taxable land in South Bend is nonprofit. So, half of your city is paying for all of your city, all right? So, there has to be a discussion as it relates to property taxes, assessed values, what we talked about earlier, in order to figure out what our future looks like. If we're not bringing in corporations or jobs or industries and people are not working like we want to work, somebody's going to have to buy, take a bigger, somebody's going to have to take a bigger portion of the taxes that needs to be paid, and that's those who are already paying taxes. So, if you don't pay attention to the other side of the discussion, and it could be churches and may not be churches, I don't know. That's why you talk about putting together a pilot program, payment in lieu of taxes. Doesn't mean that churches automatically pay taxes. It just means that you have a discussion to figure out how your nonprofits participate in paying taxes. So, I'm not suggesting that your church, Mr. Lee, pays taxes, but it does say that South Bend is kind of short on change right now and also into the future, and if we're going to be up here talking about the fiduciary responsibilities of this city regardless if it's about a church or not, then we probably should try to start talking about that now. Notre Dame is nonprofit, sir. And they're very big corporations throughout the whole entire world.
If I can follow up just with a question, are you posing for me to ask, or are you going to?
No, I'm just being, I'm just.
I mean, if it sounds, if that's something we're going to do, I'm just asking, are you going to lead the charge?
I could lead the charge. I'm interested in being educated on how that works and what goes on. This wouldn't be the first time that it was discussed here or any other community.
Thank you. Anyone else for unfinished business? With that, I'll turn to new business.
I would just like to say that we're very much devastated by the close of Walmart on the, on Portage Road, and we are working actively to make sure that the 270 employees have been, that they're going to be, whatever the process will be for Walmart and what's going to happen next, so we are working very closely to try to soften this blow. It's a very devastating blow, but we want to make sure that the 270 employees and the people who have prescriptions are taken care of, and so I will be leading the charge on being able to work on that, so.
Thank you. Counselor Hammond?
Thank you. And this is probably old business, I apologize, but the transpo board did approve the connect plan for the 6040 between ridership and coverage, and MayCOP will be voting in April to approve the final plan.
Thank you. At this time, I will turn to the privilege of the floor. Is there anyone wishing to speak to the council? You have three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Henry L. Davis, Sr., Reverend, 215 North Sheridan Street, South Bend, Indiana, 46619. I keep hearing a term being tossed around, affordable housing, when your household income is, what, $45,000, $46,000 a year, medium, 25? And the way housing cost is today, what's affordable? No one has come up with a dollar figure to make me or anyone else understand, what do you mean by affordable housing? Can someone answer that? Why all the blank staring faces at me? I asked a question.
With privilege of the floor, council doesn't respond, but I don't know if someone would want to respond. We would, what in this portion, if you ask a question, I don't know, but what as the president, I am charged with if there's nothing for me to reach out to the department head and pose that question, that I will do.
But what I was saying, we keep saying affordable, when you have all these poor people in the city of South Bend, and I keep hearing affordable, affordable. It doesn't mean anything. There's no dollar value added to that, it's just words.
I will definitely follow up on that question and get back with you on that.
You sure?
Absolutely, I will.
All right, I'm going to hold you.
Could I respond?
Yes, you can.
Normally, it is calculated on a percentage of the median household income, which is the same as an average, and so the very high income levels offset the very low income levels, and we end up at about $50,000. And then they'll say 80% of the median household, so 80% of that $50,000 decides who qualifies for affordable housing. The problem is anytime you use averages, the census tracts that are below $20,000 in average income aren't really counted in on that. So, I understand your frustration.
Yeah, because it's not affordable.
We need a better calculation.
Yeah, you need more, you need words that's going to be applicable to what you're talking about. Right now, you're just filling the air with empty words when you say affordable.
Thank you. Is that satisfy your answer?
No, it didn't satisfy.
I will.
Because we still need a dollar figure to where if I'm only making $20,000 a year and I need housing and all I hear is affordable housing, but it's not affordable to me, therefore I'm turned away.
I would definitely follow.
And that's the majority of the people, not only in the second district but in the third and in the first district.
I will definitely follow up.
So, there's nothing affordable about what you're talking, so you're talking over people's heads, and then they get discouraged and then they turn away. We need to serve the people.
Thank you. I will get that calculation for you. Thank you. Is there anyone else? Anyone in the virtual audience?
There's no one in the virtual audience expressing interest to speak in privilege of the floor.
Thank you. With that, this meeting stands adjourned. Thank you.[1512.23]